Okay, we can start.
Six o'clock then, I guess. I could call the meeting order at 6:00 PM, please. Council, Stephen, can you read the indigenous land acknowledgement, please?
I shall thank you. Indigenous land acknowledgement, the council of corporation and township of Horn County would like to begin by respecting and acknowledging that the land on which we gather here today is a treaty nine nineteen oh five nineteen oh six territory, the traditional lands of indigenous peoples. As we work toward reconciliation, maybe I'll live with respect on this land, live in peace and friendship with all its diverse peoples. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you in note of any agenda or change to agenda? I don't believe there is any. Four point one approval agenda. Can I get a mover and second please? Moved by Ted Chinaman, second by Blinda Kissinger. Be resolved that the council does hereby approve the agenda as presented. All in favor? You, declaration of culinary interest, declaration of conflict of interest could be said now or anytime to with the rest of the meeting?
I'm here for.
Oh, sorry. Mayor Ford.
Hi, thank you. Can you hear me all right?
Can't hear you, Cheryl.
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you.
I'm sorry, you can hear me and I can't hear you now. I'm gonna log out and I'll log back in. I'm, if you can hear me, I'm declaring a conflict for the minutes of the closed session and fourteen point five of the closed session.
There we go.
We're good.
Could you repeat that, Mayor Ford, please? No, I can't hear us, maybe.
Can you guys hear us? Can anyone hear us?
I, I can hear. Can you hear me? It's Richard.
Okay. Can you hear Cheryl and all of Richard?
I did, yeah. Yeah, clear as a bell. Mayor Ford, can you hear me?
Oh, she's frozen. Maybe that has something to do with it.
She did, she did say she was going to log out and log back in again. So.
Oh, okay.
She's muted right now.
Mayor Ford, are you able to repeat your declaration? Sorry, our audio is not working.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, great. And I can hear everyone as well. I apologize for that. I had to reactivate it. Um, yeah, so I declared, I'm not sure what the open session agenda item is for the closed session minutes.
Okay.
And then the other agenda item is fourteen point five of the closed session.
Who's the first one?
Uh, the first one's not technically listed on the open agenda. It's the approval or adoption of the closed session minutes enclosed.
Okay.
Uh, and then the next one is fourteen point five in the open agenda. It's a closed session item.
Okay. So, um, can we get a mover and second please for about three minutes? Moved by Blinda Kissinger, second by Council Stefanic. Be resolved that the council, the corporation of townspeople Horn County does hereby adopt the minutes of the regular meeting of council held on Wednesday, September twenty four, two thousand twenty four, sorry, September four, two thousand twenty four, as distributed. All in favor? Carry. I'm gonna move her in second here for the adoption or regular minutes of council, September eighteen. Moved by Ted Chinaman, second by Blinda Kissinger. Be resolved that the council, the corporation of township of Horn County does hereby adopt the minutes, the regular meeting of council held on Wednesday, September eighteen, two thousand twenty four, as distributed. All in favor? Carry. Mover and second for the with the resolution recommendation for departmental reports. Moved by Andrew Stefanic, second by Blinda Kissinger. Be resolved that the council, the corporation of the township of Horn County does hereby acknowledge receipt of the departmental department and reports provided by at the regular meeting of council held on Wednesday, October second, two thousand twenty four. So we don't vote for that until after it's all presented.
Yeah, after it's discussed.
So, uh, first report was with Public Works Manager. Does anybody have any questions regarding the report? Council Stefanic?
Yeah, true chair, thank you. Just a simple question on the other item. Dwayne, hydro seeding has been completed. And will the growth take place during winter time?
She was talking to the hydro seed, I didn't say, well, over the winter. It's actually the best time to have the seed right now.
Thank you for that, appreciate it.
And also the backstop place there.
I was invited by a state backup. Looks really good. Thank you.
Ted, Council Stefanic, please.
And how are we doing with the pavilion water and sewer supply? Do we have a timeline? Like, are we going to be able to get in that and use it? In the near future?
We're gonna have curb stop up to the curb stop in the sewer line up there. They're into the building. We still have to figure out we're gonna do that. But we will have water that will flush those down. Anybody else have any questions for the Public Works Manager? Uh, next on the agenda is the Economic Development Officer Departmental Report. Do you have any discussion or questions concerning that? Okay, uh, this is next is the acting treasurer's report. I believe Richard would like to go over this with us.
Yes, can everybody hear me fine? Good, okay. A couple of updates. The first, uh, screen is just to kind of list. There, how's that better?
Good.
Sorry about that. Okay, project updates, just the list of items that I have been working on. There's fall seems to be busy with reports and a lot of things happening. The second was regarding the new multi-residential property subclass. Uh, just an update on that. I have got a, a response back from Thunder Bay District Municipal League, and that, my request for information's been sent to the seventeen municipalities in the district of Thunder Bay. So we may hear back some, uh, because the current information is they didn't know of any municipalities in Agoma or Cochrane that were doing the multi-res rate. So my suggestion to council is we'll go ahead and get the bylaw ready for next, uh, possibly the next meeting. And by then, maybe we'll hear, hear back from some other municipalities as to what they're doing. My recommendation to council is let's draft the bylaw with the maximum thirty-five percent reduction. And it can be changed if we do hear that there are some municipalities, uh, doing a lower amount. I'm still waiting on the financial, final financial statement so we can get our capital projects financed. I wanted to explain to council that landfill closure cost item, and I understand there may be a report. I need to do some digging into the reports that we have, uh, completed on file to see if we've got something that does better justify the potential liability for the municipality. And the last screen was regarding the tax arrears and tax sale properties. Again, just an update there. I was chatting today with Donna, who is the, the rep from the tax agency that looks after the tax sales. And so we're moving forward on that. As of now, and I did want to point out to a lot of the arrears there, well, there's five properties that are provincial ministries. So again, that's just gonna take some time to get on the phone, try and track down somebody that can authorize some payments and try and get that all looked after. Any questions on that report?
Any questions anyway?
Yes.
Yeah. Richard, on the multi-residential, do we have the authority to decide whether that's two units, four units, six, or is it, do we have to specify that? Or is it, does it have to be?
It's, it's specified, yeah, it's specified in the legislation. To my understanding, you, you have no option there. How many units? It's defined by, well, through the, the impact and the new subclass. It was in a previous report. I think it said it could be a renovation or a new construction with a minimum number of units. And I'm not off the top of my head, I can't remember the number, but I think it is six or seven minimum units.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Not a murder. Do you have any questions?
No, I do not. Thank you, Richard.
I got one, Richard. The hundred sixty-seven thousand dollars that's in arrears with the provincially owned properties, is that included? That one sixty-seven, is that part of the nine hundred thousand dollars that we have right now only in back taxes?
Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
So it constitutes almost twenty percent of the overall taxes in arrears.
Yep.
Through oil.
Okay. It, it is. I have dealt with this at another municipality in the past, and sometimes the ministries don't even think or realize where they, where they own property and what is there. And it's just a matter of getting to the right person, uh, getting the assessment, showing them some pictures. And once there, if there's an error in the assessment, then, then let's get it fixed. If there isn't, then start paying your bill.
Madam Mayor, do you have a question?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Uh, through you to Richard, I just wanted to, um, talk about a bit about the arrears. Because I was thinking after our last meeting when we had the breakdown, and I was trying to find out the percentage of people that are not paying the percentage of properties, because it sounds like although it is a significant number, I don't want it to go floating into the municipality that everyone's not paying their taxes. Because if our levy is two point, just under two point two million, and at this current state for this year, I, going off the top of my head right now by memory, it was about a hundred and forty thousand, I believe, in arrears. And I was just trying to see what that, like, how many properties or what percentage of the tax, um, pair that is, like it. And I'm not trying to minimize the, I'm just, I just don't want it to be like more people not paying because they're like, well, no one's paying their taxes when in fact the majority of our property owners are working together to pay our tax, to, to pay their taxes. And I want to acknowledge that.
Yeah, um, that, you're absolutely right. Most, most people are. We do have the tax sale properties. And because it, they're multiple years in arrears, that adds up to a lot. And then the, um, there's a property at two hundred Front Street that needs to be resolved. And there's some properties where the, the property have sold, I believe, and we're just in the process of closing those, I understand, three properties. When I talked to Carol or Donna today. And then the ministry, if we can get them cleaned up, the, the arrears are not gonna look too bad at all. But I will try and let council know if there's anything serious in there. But I think once we get the these vest, the properties vested, uh, the ministry cleaned up and a couple of other, uh, properties that we're looking at, the tax arrears, hopefully by the end of the year are gonna be in a lot better shape than they, they have been.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Is there any more, anybody else? Was there anything you would like to add, Richard, to this?
Uh, nothing more to that report, but I do want to speak to the next item, which is my response to the twenty twenty-three audit. If there's nothing else on that report, we'll move forward onto that.
Yeah, yeah, please.
Okay, I, I just wanted to point out.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I'm gonna move her second.
Oh, no, you're just, you're all in favor.
It's all in favor.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sorry, go ahead, Richard.
Okay. Um, I have a couple of opening comments about the audit that was performed for the township for twenty twenty-three. And for the record, I've been both municipal treasurer and a municipal auditor in my career. Actually, I've been C A O for about six years as well. I've never been involved with a year-end audit where I, as the treasurer, did not have a chance to review and discuss all of the adjustments before the statements were presented to council. Even the engagement letter that's provided by the auditors to the township says that they will obtain our approval if during the course of the engagement, they prepare or change a journal entry. Uh, they also say that they require that the following safeguards be put in place. And one of those safeguards is that we review the township reviews and approves the draft financial statements, including the notes to the statements. Neither of these items happened with this audit. The other thing, the rep representation letter, which has been provided by the auditor, was signed by the mayor at the auditor's request. This letter is usually also customarily provided and signed off by senior staff, being the C A O and the treasurer, who are the people that are responsible for ensuring that the terms of that letter are met. That didn't occur. As a result of the, of the auditor's presentation at the last council meeting, as the acting treasurer, I decided it was prudent to help inform council by preparing schedules by department for the twenty twenty-three year as well as year-to-date to July for twenty twenty-four. Those, uh, are prepared in a manner similar to what we use to budget for the budget preparation, and I hope will be a lot easier to follow than the financial statements. I emailed those schedules to all the council on Monday this week. I would suggest that these schedules be placed on the agenda for the next council meeting so that the general public can view them as well, and we can discuss them in more detail at that time. Uh, I will note that from my summary page with those, uh, department schedules, the operating deficit for twenty twenty-three is showing at just over four hundred and three thousand compared to the eight hundred thousand mentioned by the auditor at the council meeting, or the one point four million that's shown in the draft financial statement.
You froze, Richard. Does he maybe have to reboot as well?
I'm not sure. Um, oh.
You're, oh, are we, are we back?
We're back.
You're back.
Okay. I don't know what happened there, and I'm not sure how far I got. I did, I did make the comment that from my schedules, the, uh, operating deficit is just over four hundred and three thousand. Okay. Um, I wanted to point out also that the first time I saw the draft financial statements was at the same time that those, uh, statements were presented for the council packages. Uh, this is not normal practice. A couple of the items in that four hundred and three thousand figure that I, I would have reviewed and discussed further with the auditor are the allowance for doubtful accounts of forty-nine thousand and the increase in the liability for landfill closure at a hundred and twelve thousand. And that item I first heard of during the council meeting. Again, that's, to me, that's terrible that they don't discuss those items with, with staff. The other thing in the summary of the twenty twenty-three capital and special projects budget and, and actual, some of the items that were budgeted for in twenty twenty-three were to be financed from reserves. Again, with no discussions with the auditor, those adjustments never got made. So there was spending, for instance, there, there's three items that I've noted, but one, the landfill engineering was to be financed from a reserve. So the reserve entry never got made because I never got a chance to discuss that with the auditors. There's also an amount of borrowing interest, uh, for, for the airport construction, which did not qualify for grant purposes. But again, that could have been funded through the, partly, partly anyway, through the federal gas tax funding. If, if we would have had a discussion about it. So, uh, anyway, there are some positive takeaways from the twenty twenty-three results. Everything you heard last meeting were negative. And yes, there is a twenty twenty-three deficit, but it is not nearly as bad as was stated at the last meeting. Based on the available information and subject to further reconciliation, the operating deficit is likely under the four hundred thousand dollar mark. And if the allowance for doubtful taxes and the landfill closure costs can be remedied, that figure could be under two hundred and fifty thousand. Again, I suggest that I prepare a summary report based on the actual results. And along with the department schedules, that we put that on the next meeting's, uh, agenda and discuss a little further. And maybe by then, we'll have our, our final financial statements from the auditors so that we can proceed with setting up our long-term funding requirements for this year and next year's capital spending. Those were the comments I wanted to make, and I, if anybody has any questions, we can deal with it now or in more detail at the next meeting is my suggestion. I'll turn it back to you, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Richard, for, for the summaries. Do we have to all agree to this? No, so you'll get the summaries done, then that's one thing that you're gonna do, Richard?
The, the summaries have already been emailed to each member of council on Monday of this week. And, but I will provide them to staff so that we can get them on the agenda for the next council meeting, because I think we need to, to put this out to everybody and and, and explain a, a little better, I think, anyway, where, where we are actually at as compared to what we budgeted.
Go ahead, Jen.
Um, I just wanted to clarify. So the summaries are what I printed for. So these are.
Yeah.
True, Chair. Thank you for your report, Richard, and, uh, I find your comments, I appreciate it immensely, um, regarding the audit. Not only concerns me, but alarms me that there was failure by the auditor to follow those items that you specifically mentioned, and I find it very concerning. But thank you for that. I did not know that. I appreciate it.
Okay.
Anybody else have any questions? Oh, go ahead, Madam Mayor.
Yes, uh, through you, Chair, to, um, the treasurer. Uh, first of all, I'm deeply concerned that I signed a paper that I shouldn't have signed then because it was forwarded to me from the auditors. I didn't see any difference in the, uh, process.
I, I wouldn't worry about it. Uh, it just, it's kind of, um, very unusual that they would have the mayor or deputy mayor, in this case both, sign the representation letter when really, I guess, to put it in simple terms, the, the duties of the mayor and council are to set policy and have then the staff are to follow those policies. And the management letter really is saying that the staff have provided everything that they have and made all of the necessary adjustments and controls. So it, it really should be, uh, be confirmed by the senior management. By them asking council to do it, I guess that's not wrong, but to me, the council are not, not in the office every day and not as aware of the controls and the information provided to the auditors as senior management would be. And I, again, I just found it very strange. I even had a discussion with them and said, I know I have the title acting treasurer, but the bylaw that appoints me gives me the full, uh, power as a treasurer under the municipal act. I could sign those for you. And, uh, but I was told, no, they wanted the mayor and the deputy to sign. So I, I'm just stepping back, and at this point, I just want to get this finished. And I want to get the final statement so that we can move forward. And the, any adjustments that weren't made that I think should have, um, or any adjustments, we, we can deal with them in the future. And we'll make sure this doesn't happen next year, that there will be some discussions with staff before the audit is complete and, and provided to council.
Just a follow-up question, Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead, Madam Mayor.
Um, yes, uh, Richard, so it, I know that, see the documents that'll come up on our next meeting, and I appreciate that them coming up on the next meeting. I was surprised, actually. I was a little confused at why they weren't on this meeting, but I do appreciate the extra time to get to review them. Um, will your statements, your opening statements or the overall audit be included as well?
They could be included as well. Yeah, again, um, I think it's probably a, a good idea. And, uh, the reason it wasn't on the agenda this time is I didn't finish those reports until Monday of this week. Just before I, I scanned them all and, and sent them out to council. I did, I had made the commitment to council that I would provide you with an interim report to the end of July, and it would be done by the end of September. So that was my goal, but I then expanded it to also include the actual results for twenty twenty-three. And that, so it took a little longer, but I did want to get it out to council as I had committed with the idea, you can now have a look at it, and we can still put it on the agenda for more in-depth discussion. And I think it, it's important for the general public to hear, to see those and to hear my comments regarding adjustments that were made or should be made. And then, uh, hopefully, everybody gets a little better understanding of the financial statements. I do have to say that, you know, the auditor is required by the, the province to prepare statements with amortization and other adjustments that come under P S A, the, the, the provincial legislation. It's not the way we budget. It's not the way people are used to seeing reports. And I don't know, that there might be a couple of the large municipalities that do budget under P S A. But, uh, anybody that I've worked with, and in the last ten years, I think I've worked with eight different municipalities, they all budget the same way. By department and, and capital, you know, each project and, and how it's gonna be funded. So, uh, it, what we're doing is not unusual, but it, it makes a comparison from that system to a final ending financial statement very confusing for anybody to look at. So I'm gonna try and put it in better terms, uh, so that hopefully council and the general public can get a better understanding of where we're at.
Thank you, Richard.
Okay.
Any more questions for anybody for treasurer? Um, more of a comment, Richard. I echo Council Stefanic's concern. This is both alarming. And, uh, it's an eye-opener for us. And I guess this is what happens when we get comfortable with what is done in the past and and we think that everything's going good, then, uh, we become complacent. So I think this going forward, I think we're all gonna agree that. and we think that everything's going good, then we become complacent. So I think this going forward, I think we're all going to agree that this will be a lesson learned, and we have to learn from it and go forward. And and also on personal note, on behalf of everybody, thank you so much for your help, because this has been you've been teaching us as long as well as being the treasurer. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. So we all vote if we accept the Treasury report?
This didn't need any voting.
Okay. Okay, get a mover and second or for the correspondence action items? Okay, move by Ted Chinaman, second by Linda Kissinger.
And you want me to read this one?
Please.
So this is the Childcare Worker and Early Childhood Educator Appreciation Day proclamation. Whereas the well-being, safety and development of young children in the township of Hornpan are crucial to the community's future prosperity and vitality. And whereas childcare workers and early childhood educators are integral to providing high-quality early childhood education and care, which supports the growth and development of children and their families. And whereas these professionals are dedicated to nurturing, teaching and caring for young children, often going above and beyond their duties to ensure that children have a strong foundation for their future success. And whereas the Ontario Coalition for Better Childcare, OC-BCC, and the Canadian Union of Public Employees, QB, have designated Thursday, October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four, as the Twenty-Fourth Annual Childcare Worker and Early Childhood Educator Appreciation Day with the theme "Growing the Future Together: Recognizing the Hard Work, Commitment, and Passion of These Essential Workers." Therefore, be it resolved that the Council of the Corporation of the Township of Hornpan does hereby proclaim Thursday, October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four, as Childcare Worker and Early Educator Appreciation Day in the Township of Hornpan, and urges all residents to recognize and celebrate the dedication and hard work of these professionals in our community.
Thank you. All in favor? Carrie. I get a mover and a second here for nine point one correspondence information only. Move by Glenn Kissinger, second by Counselor Stefanik. Be resolved that the Council of the Corporation of Township of Hornpan does hereby acknowledge and receive the correspondence information whole package attached to the agenda of the regular meeting of council held on Wednesday, October second, two thousand and twenty-four. Do we have any? Anybody who wants to contribute or ask me a question?
Yeah, to Chair, I'm not sure if I missed it last correspondence, but the Good Roads, it's they have a Reduced Municipal Liability Temporary Work Zones One-Day Workshop. I couldn't find it in this, but it was sent to me, so it should have been somewhere over the last one. I'm not sure. It's a one-day workshop. In Mississauga, I understand also they may be virtual. Maybe would be wise respectfully say that member of staff attends this because we are going to have major construction. And that's the before time I said that there are meetings because and this is they're going to look at the Ontario Traffic Manual Book Seven. They can discuss the various scenarios. I didn't see if you're apologize, but that's it's in November twelfth in Mississauga. Thank you. Good Roads Association.
Thank you, Counselor Stefanik. Does anybody else have anything to add? Mayor, Mayor Part?
Yeah, I would second that if we want to put a motion on the table or the Treasurer can take direction if staff wants to attend that course. I'm in agreement with Counselor Stefanik. As long as there's a budget allowing for that to happen within their preview.
All in favor?
Is there any other discussion?
Is there any other discussion? So all in favor to accept information on? Good, Carrie. Ten point one council committee updates. Do we have anybody that has updates, starting with the Mayor Report?
Ah, yes, I have a couple of updates for council. First of all, I'd like to thank the Deputy Mayor for taking Chair this evening. I have started a new position within CN, so I'm an Engine Service Officer. I'm currently doing training here in Toronto. Last week, I did attend Ontario Good Roads Association Board meetings on behalf of the municipality and being a director for Good Roads. I I I'm glad Counselor Stefanik brought up the the courses that are happening. There are further courses happening that we should be looking into. And we did have a discussion about the liability and the overturning of the court decision for the Sudbury liability, which I think is in favor of municipalities, so that's a good thing. And I don't have anything else to report, and I should be back in the community on Saturday.
Thank you, and congratulations on your good job. Counselor Linda Kissinger?
I don't have anything at this time.
Counselor Stefanik?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. The update, I had a virtual PHU finance meeting last week. We had a library board meeting yesterday. It was very productive. The report was submitted by CEO. Our numbers for this summer are solid participation in the various programs. We also have right now our CEO and two board members with assistants who are consultants working on updating strategic plan. Our strategic plan for the library was outdated, and they're working diligently to have that prepared for the board for board approval. PHU Board of Health shall be in person. I didn't attend the person last time. It was a virtual and end of October. Also, I would respectfully suggest CDAC meeting to be postponed since Jennifer has extra duties responsibilities to have to continue start those against CDAC meetings after the CEO has been hired because I respect her position. And the final one, Irene informed me that the thirty-second Public Awareness Day, and her final one was well-received participation from service provider was good, and the attendance was very good considering the schools did not attend because of PD day. So we did worry about that issue, but it was well attended, and she was quite pleased. I thought I'd bring that to the members of council. Thank you.
Counselor Shannon?
Thank you. We had a meeting for the hospital board, and we had some, I think, rather good news is we've been able to secure registered nurses, so our dependency on agency nurses is drastically reduced, reduced, and that's been good. So that really cuts back on the budget as well as they've been able to acquire a home to make sure that now they have proper housing for anyone who is in the community that we've been able to secure it so they're safe and also it's not co-ed, so it'll be guys, one ladies and the other, and keep that. Dr. Cameron has been able to secure staff right up to the spring, so hospital coverage for the doctors will be taken care of right up to the spring. And there was an increase in provincial funding for upcoming year for the hospital. We're not in bad shape.
Is that going to bounce a book for?
It it could come very close. Yeah, yeah, it's in very good shape.
I didn't hear that. For myself, I got nothing out at this moment.
Um, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sorry.
Sorry, I just I just forgot to update council. At our last council meeting, we had a talk about forestry and about reaching out to see if Hornpan Lumber and Hornpan Power needed any more support or anything from town council, so I did have a discussion with Mr. Jill Mallett, and at this time, he said no further action at right now. They had just had a ministry roundtable.
Thank you for that. I'm moving on to eleven point one, and I get a mover and a second here to set a special meeting on for October eighth regarding Hiring Committee Recommended Recommendation from CEO Clerk Candidates. Move by Ted Chinaman, second by Linda Kissinger. Be resolved that the council does hereby set a special meeting on Tuesday, October eighth, two thousand and twenty-four, at six P M. In a hybrid meeting room for the purpose of reviewing the Hiring Committee Recommended CAO slash clerk candidates in a closed session. Do we have any discussion on this? All in favor? Okay, good. Opener, mover and second please for eleven point two, vesting of vest properties, move by Counselor Stefanik. Second by Ted Chinaman. Read this.
Whereas Part eleven of the municipal Act two thousand and one S O two thousand and one C twenty-five legislaters, the sale of land for tax barriers. And whereas Section three seventy-five or three seventy-nine five states that the treasurer, in accordance with the prescribed rules, shall conduct a public sale and determine whether there is a successful purchaser and A, if there is a successful purchaser, shall prepare and register a tax deed in the name of the successful purchaser or in such name as the successful purchaser may direct, or B, if there is no successful purchaser, may prepare and register in the name of municipality a notice of vesting, two thousand and one C twenty-five S three seventy-nine five. And whereas the township has conducted public sales with no successful purchaser, therefore be it resolved that the court, the Council of the Corporation of the Township of Hornpan, upon recommendation from the Acting Treasurer, does hereby authorize the Acting Treasurer to have the following properties best township of Hornpan. Rule number five seven nine six zero 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 one zero three zero 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 one thirty-seven Front Street. Rule number five seven nine six zero 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 one zero one four zero 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 thirty-three Front Street. Rule number five seven nine six zero 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 three one one three zero 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 eighty-two Fourth Avenue. Rule number five seven nine six zero 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 three one two one zero 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 one thirteen Fourth Avenue. Rule number five seven nine six zero 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 four one two three zero 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 eighty-one Second Avenue. And rule number five seven nine six zero 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 five zero seven two zero 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 fifty Queen Street.
Any discussion on that? Okay, Jim.
So I do have something to add. Today, we received a written letter from a concerned resident regarding the safety of the structure at one thirty-seven Front Street. On advice from municipal government wayfinders, I contacted the Chief Building Official and Fire Chief to request that they inspect and advise on any code violations for their respective codes and any corrective measures needed regardless of the vesting process that we're in. I have not heard back yet, but I'm hoping to.
Good, excellent. Some all in favor? Carrie. Eleven point three discussion social media policy, I believe. Our mayor would like to speak to this.
Yes, we had a complaint that was brought to my attention about not being on Facebook, and people are concerned about us not being on Facebook. And then review of our social media policy is we actually need to either amend the policy to not continue with Facebook, or we need to bring Facebook back. So it's up here for discussion, and I just wanted to be accountable and transparent that what we're currently doing doesn't fit our actual social media policy. And I I'm just not sure I what direction we could have from staff. Do we wait till we have a new CAO and deal with it at that point, or is it I don't want to overwhelm staff capacity? I just wanted to have it brought forth that this was something current. It was deferred from our last meeting just because it went longer, but it is a current issue.
How big of a job Madam Mayor would it be to take a look at it and be bring it up to date?
I would have to defer to staff. I would probably leave that to the Deputy Clerk to answer. She may know better and her advice.
So I'm not exactly sure how difficult it would be to bring it up to date. I think the first thing that we would need is direction from council as to whether or not we want to look at re-implementing certain social media, or if we want to move forward with removing it from the policy. And then go from there to see how what that process would be for each of those options. I'm not sure, Richard.
Yeah, if if I may just chirp in, I I like the idea of deferring until you do have a CAO. I think staff are pretty well strapped, just keeping day-to-day going and being so shorthanded. I think it's a good idea to get it on the get it out there so that it is something that needs to be updated, and maybe as soon as a new CAO is on board. Maybe that CAO will have some experience with social media and and the direction that should go forward, my comments.
Thank you. Go ahead, Madam Mayor.
Yeah, I just want to ensure that the residents that put forward the complaint, it was CC'd to our past CAO as well, so if they could be responded to, letting them know that we are going to deal with this on the upon hiring of the new CAO within, obviously not the day after they're hired with the timeline or or will for update the timeline.
Your question?
Thank you, Jerry. I just have a comment. I have numerous comments, but I'll defer all my comments until such time that's appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's excuse for that. Eleven point four discussion, Mayor's Questions Pertaining to the two thousand and twenty-three Audit. Again, Madam Mayor, I believe you'd like to address this.
Yes. After Richard's report on our next meeting, I think these are questions that we can put in there with further information. I think there's quite a bit of measures that need to be put in the background to ensure that we're following policy and have his suggestions. That would be my recommendation.
I'm not like that. Okay, that's that's sounds like a good plan. Moving on to bylaws, twelve point one, I'm going to move her a second or please. Move by Ted Chinaman, second by Linda Kissinger. Be resolved that bylaw number twenty ninety-six being a bylaw to amend bylaw number two thousand and one being a bylaw to regulate animals within the township of Hornpan. Be hereby read a first and a second time, and then considered read a third time and finally passed. Any discussion concerning the amendment? Madam Mayor?
If we could have the amendment explained.
Can I for that do you, Jen, please?
So this amendment was provided by the by law enforcement officer or in in collaboration with the by law enforcement officer resulting from a recent court decision.
Any other questions? Madam Mayor?
Yeah, just to reiterate too, this is one of the bylaws that we have on our list that needs to be brought back to council and completely revamped as well, right? So this is an amendment that we need to include to ensure it functions properly as is, but.
Yes. This is an interim measure essentially until we are able to completely redo the bylaw, which will also be in collaboration with the by law enforcement officer. He has a lot of experience with animal-related bylaws. But in the meantime, just to supplement or or make our current bylaw more functional, this is interim measure.
Step one.
Okay. So all in favor? Carrie. Motions and notices of motion. There is none?
I have not received any.
Okay. Section 14.1, we are moving into closed session. Be resolved that the next portion of the meeting at 6:49 PM.
Need a mover in a second.
Oh, I'm sorry. I gotta move a seconder please. Move by Linda Kissinger, second by Ted Sherman. Be resolved that the next portion of the meeting at 6:49 PM we close the public in order to discuss personal matters of what are identifiable individual including municipal and local board employees litigation and potential litigation including matters before administrative tribunals affecting municipality or local board invite that is subject to solicitor client privilege including communications necessary for that purpose and a position plan procedure criteria or instruction to be applied to any negotiations carried on or to be carried on by or on behalf of the municipality or local board pursuant to section 939 to be F K of the municipal act 2001. All fair? Okay. Close, go on, close.
All right, we are live.
Hey. He goes like this, wow, you're good.
We're live.
Okay, I'm gonna do that.
Okay. Wow. Jesus. I'll get you reading the coordinator. Is that you? Are you okay?
Yes, we are at 14.7.
Important was there a move or a second or two return into open council? By Ted Chinaman. Second by Geralt Fanek. Be resolved by the council, the corporation, and township of Hornet Pain does hereby return to open council at 8:17 PM. On paper. Carrie. Business arising from the closed session.
There, everything is still ongoing. There's nothing at this time.
Thank you, Jen. I would like to move our second or two for adjournment.
Sure.
Move by Belinda Kissinger, second by Ted Chinaman. Be resolved that bylaw number 2096 being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council at the regular meeting held on Wednesday, October 2nd, 2024 be hereby read a first and second time and considered read a third time and finally passed. On paper. Move on a second or two adjourned me. By Geralt Fanek, second by Belinda Kissinger. Be resolved by the council hereby does hereby adjourn this regular meeting of council held on Wednesday, October 2nd, 2024 at 8:18 PM. On paper. Carrie. Good night, everybody.
A great night, everyone.